Glad I didn't retire yet.
We appreciate that, that'd be great.
Yeah. And I would just kind of yell at people next to me because I can't hear anything. And they'd say something and I'd just quietly smile and shake my head.
Could you then hear him? Would you then go?
That's itself. Because I can see them shaking their head, you're all like the same. Act like I'm hearing what you're saying.
Alright, call the meeting to order. Start with your pledge of allegiance. Aye.
Can you hear Melissa?
Yeah. Thank you.
Alright, board, we have an agenda in front of you, any additions or corrections to the agenda as proposed? Alright, no changes to it, I'll undertake a motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a first.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor said no by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, we have an agenda. Alright, move on to any comments from the public. Alright, we'll move on. Uh, communication items. Um, we'll move into, uh, any board member or committee reports to be given this evening. Alright, then we'll move on to superintendent's board.
Okay, uh, we had the fire marshal on site, um, for their annual inspections, things went good. Few things we have to take care of, but not too major, I mean, we got clearance, it was good. Um, there should have been an email, then I went out this afternoon. We're gonna have everybody register their vehicles to park them on campus. Um, that's for safety purposes, um, if we ever had a crisis going on, we need to be able to produce license plate information pretty quick. It would cut down on time for the law enforcement, et cetera. Um, I'm also gonna have staff register their vehicles, I purchased parking tags, so we'll get those for probably the middle of the week, so. We were trying to front load it, get that information out to parents today, so. Um, that'll be done this week. Um, we met with the governor, um, the twenty-third of October, with the large school group. Uh, we talked about his property tax bill that he's gonna propose. Uh, that would be the one that the large school group is gonna support. If you listen to the other ones, the other ones were pretty much a tack on public education. Um, his is gonna, it's really, comes up to the counties, the counties can vote to put it in or not. Um, that's the one we're gonna support, it would come back, essentially it's a regressive tax. In the fact that you're, it's a half a percent of sales tax is what it is, and then it comes back to the property tax. But at the same time, Lincoln County can vote to be in it or not. But it's, the, the property tax issue is not a statewide issue, it's about five counties in the state where the issue is. So it's about, you know, five counties, pretty much big, you know. Um, in that meeting, we also were told that there's probably not gonna be a lot of funding in education this year, I'm sure you've probably have all heard that. Um, so we need to be prepared for that. It's, the governor's budget address will be on the second of December. And then on the third of December, the state superintendent group will get together and we'll begin that process of looking at legislation and what we're gonna do. And how we're gonna go with that after the budget address. Um, Mr. Ike brought it to my attention this morning that the Turner County Fair rolled back another week next year, so the county fair is the seventeenth through the twentieth. So that's gonna roll school back even more, so now we're looking at like the week of the twenty-fourth. So we began, I began starting to try to put some calendars together to kind of look at how we're gonna address that. That's about a whole week later than we started this year, so. Um, I sent it out to the admin team, I gave one to, uh, Wendy Ryschel and the LBA. I'll pull the, pull together the superintendent cabinet group I have, we'll start that process of looking at calendar, probably far more advanced than we probably have in the past. But with that late start like that, we need to kind of figure out how we're gonna fit in our, um, in-service times and things of that nature, open house, et cetera. So. Um, I did send out a letter to all the parents last week regarding kind of how we'll work with, um, cone off school with inclement weather. Um, I thought it'd be better to front load our parents so that maybe they have a better idea of how things are gonna go. Um, you know, obviously we'll do the best we can to try to stick to some of that, and, you know, I'm, I'm more, I'd rather be proactive than reactive. I'd like to get on the front end of things if I can, so. And then my thing, the thing is congrats, uh, congrats Coach Flanagan, his staff, the football players on, uh, their win Friday night, and the opportunity to play in the O B M. Wasn't the prettiest football game in the world, but by the way, it was, so. Whether you win by one or forty-one, it doesn't matter, win, so. That's what I got for you.
Any questions? Alright, then we'll move on to, uh, principal and director reports, who wants to go first?
Elder Chris, please.
Elder Mentaries, um, both of our schools held a title night, um, a couple weeks ago. Um, the students and families were invited to come and, uh, participate in some literacy activities that were centered around the camping theme. Uh, the students that came received a snack, a book, and some activities that they could take home. Anything there?
Um, we have, all of our teachers are completing, or have completed their SLOs and their first of two detailed lesson plans. Um, all the principals are in the middle of the evaluation, so we're working to those things.
Yes, we had common planning last week, and teachers were talking about, um, the rigor in math and reading, and it's been to reevaluate how we're teaching to help our students have more role.
And then, um, our school psychologists and director of student services met with all of our teachers to evaluate some of all our data. And to see if there's any students who are needing additional help, or, um, students who we might need to have different ways of reaching them.
Um, Worthy Elementary has completed two fire drills this year, they did their two most, um, and they were both super successful, it's, it's a good quickly and safely.
Uh, we can remember, we talked about this last time, but Corey, the transportation director, taught all two stuff about safety, and completed a fire drill on the bus. And then, uh, we also did another Oriole and Spotlight Assembly on Halloween. We're gonna be starving, copying good, our third quarter, which typically we do in our second, but, um, we're gonna do it our third quarter this year. Um, and then we're continuing with MVP, street training, cop bus, and all those things for staff.
Hi, Worthy Elementary, we had a costume parade on Halloween in the afternoon, uh, the only community members were invited to see the kids in their costumes, and they held it during the Halloween parties.
Um, we are gonna be having vision screenings this week for both schools, um, we actually started in the preschool today. Our wellness committee is beginning to send out information about giving tree, um, and then we are gonna be doing our secret family Thanksgiving service project this year. Um, and then our wellness committee is also planning to, uh, have staff celebratory events over the next couple weeks, months, but all, all of this.
Um, and at Worthy Elementary, last week we held our third grade traditional hold dances for families, and yours is next week, right?
Ours is this week.
Oh, this week, this week.
Six o'clock. Some dancing.
So families and communities came to the Worthy Elementary gym, um, they sat around in a circle while the kids showed the dances that they had learned, and then the last one, they picked an audience member to come, and then they taught the dance with them. And there was a lot of smiles and laughter, and nobody fell down, but there were a couple with two left feet, but it was kind of fun to watch the other team. Any questions for Worthy Elementary?
Thank you.
At the intermediate, uh, under academic excellence, Kayla Haverville and I will be presenting the report card. Kayla is getting her admin degree, so she has some powers that she needs to complete, so we're a perfect opportunity to be a part of that. Um, as Cody mentioned, complete, we've completed round one of our walkthroughs in the middle of our first formal evaluations with staff, and we'll be beginning second round of walkthroughs, uh, starting this week. At our last common planning, our staff kind of did the same thing as the elementary schools, we talked about depth of knowledge and the types of questions we're asking our kids, the level three, level four types of questioning, questions like comparing, analyzing, synthesizing. Just those higher order ones, uh, growth is something that you'll see on the report card, something that we can work on. And so those were some discussions that we had along with our fifth and sixth grade, uh, math, science, and reading teachers. Met and talked about how to use, called G S M O's for science and math, it's an interactive online program that the state used to pay for, that we now pay for, and also Ed Puzzell, and it's just with language arcs and, and kind of, um, engaging students more in their learning. For district staff and school climate, we brought in our staff for the last common planning, we had a Thanksgiving meal, so that was kind of fun to be able to sit and visit and eat a Thanksgiving meal before we dove into common planning. I'm not sure Mr. Duett had anything to eat for the next three days, or anything he ate that day. Uh, community engagement, we held our second Veterans Day program on Friday, so we had eight veterans come into our classrooms. And they've had four twenty-five minute presentations, and students got to pick four people that they wanted to go to. Um, just about their, their life in the military, places they've been, things they collected, so that was a lot of fun, that was a two-hour timeframe. And then we invited veterans of some of our kids' family members to come in and get a free meal that we're paying for, and they could also bring in another family member if they wanted to. And then Mr. Larson, our music teacher, they sang some patriotic songs during, during that time, so, so that was good, and I think that is a tradition that we will continue. We never want to interrupt with what the high school and junior high are doing, so we always like to do it before they have their big program, so that's the intermediate tour.
I don't have much for the high school, because Chad and I didn't talk about anything, but he's back, so we're glad about that, half days. Um, like everybody said, we are having our Veterans Day program tomorrow at two thirty. Maria and Skalp and Paige Melton's dad is teaching, so they're excited. Our science teachers, we talked about curriculum, well, on curriculum. And the Seussical is coming up on the twenty-first and twenty-second, still, right?
Yep.
And we're excited because it's gonna be in the T A C.
Worthy Elementary, we're going to see half of it.
And then you are still hanging on.
That's our plan.
Um, we looked at data for common planning, kind of dug down, and we looked at some subgroups, and that's about it.
Uh, in special education, we continue to stay busy, but some of the big things, last month we celebrated P T month, and then last week we celebrated school safety, so. All I got.
Uh, for activities, of course, we had football, going to the state championship game, that game we had noon. Uh, one thing that's unique this year is the cost of parking. You can still park closer to where the, uh, what's it called, the Kyle Village is, for free, but anything that's in the dome parking lot will be five dollars, except they say that kids will be free. Um, so we'll advertise a lot for our kids to bring their student IDs so they can get in there for free and do that, so that's some of the difference. Uh, adults are fifteen, students are ten for tickets. Um, if you buy it online, there's an additional three dollars on each, but if you just call them, um, they can email them to you and get you the tickets for that fifteen dollars and ten dollars versus the eighteen and thirteen. Uh, something that was pretty unique, from what I heard is our junior high football team, both the seventh and the eighth grade, went undefeated. Um, from, from what everybody I've heard, that's the first time in school history, so that's really cool. Um, and I do, we did really have a cool officiating group this year for all our sub varsity. Uh, we had a lot of people that did, that do Friday night games and all that, so that was a cool thing to add in towards D D C and, uh, junior high teams, and we could get some people officiating with experience. Uh, volleyball finished twenty-four and eight, um, that was a big time season for them. Uh, put up a good battle against Sioux Falls Christian there at the end, even though it was three zero. It was, we probably played some of our best volleyball at the end of the season, even though the record, if you look toward the end, didn't seem that way, we played more of our tougher teams toward the end. And so they were in a really good spot, um, it was good to have that last home game and, and get our pep band there and throw out shirts, and that was a cool experience, both for the kids playing, but for the fans that came. Um, and then before that, the senior night that we did, um, against Garrettson, that was really, or against Baltic, that was a really cool experience that we could give those seniors, uh, to have as well. Um, kind of just going through some of our fall activities, since I wasn't here for the last one, we hosted Garrettson for volleyball. Uh, boys golf had two qualifiers, if you didn't know, we had over forty boys actually play golf this year, seventh through twelve, so that's impressive, kudos to Coach Hinker. Our girls tennis had a great season, um, we hosted some of those first home events here at Lennox, so that was really cool. Got the lights on, actually had, they had some practices under the lights, um, with Coach Plank and his schedule, but we had over twenty girls this year out, so it's really cool to see that program growing, and that's kudos to Coach Plank, and the girls getting other girls out, too. Uh, cross country, girls placed fifth, and boys placed sixth, those are both podium positions, so they came back with plaques, and we have a lot of returning athletes coming back, too. Um, whether you saw, and the next one would be a marching band, whether you saw them at a football game, or you went to any of their competitions, our marching band did something really impressive this year. And that's, that's kudos to Ellie and Tyler for putting those, those kids in a great position, put on a great show. The indoor marching band show in Fundery was a really, really cool event. Um, I brought my daughter to that one after volleyball, and she thought that was really, really cool to see the lights off, glow sticks, everything like that in the gym, and kind of finish off their season and do a banquet, everything. Chorus, we just did all-state, um, orchestra and chorus, so we had, what was it, eight members or five members go, so that was really cool. That's the reason that one football game is played on, uh, Thursday, is because there's all-state chorus that goes on that Friday and Saturday, so Mr. Colby took a whole bunch of kids up there that got selected, so that's really cool for them. Uh, cheer, um, has been great at the football games, and getting to travel up to Sioux Falls Christian this year, and then also traveling to Dell's for that playoff game, even though it was pretty cold to cheer in, they did a great job with great positive attitudes. Um, some other things, our weight room numbers have been really good in attendance in the morning, we've just gone six forty-five until, um, about seven thirty-ish. Maybe a little later on certain days, when we've had our lift and learn, and also incorporating in my P U classes some lifting, but the numbers that kids are performing at's been really cool to see them improve. Um, whether it's vertical, or power clean, or bench performance, it's really cool to see those kids improve. Um, some things coming up, uh, we, we're rocking roll, Orland Turp, the theater and the play, um, they've been able to practice a little bit more in the pack now, so that's really cool. Powerlifting will get going, uh, we'll have really big numbers for that this year, so we're gonna try to find some more competitions, maybe even host one as well. Uh, basketball will get going, junior high girls actually had their first game today. Um, seventh and eighth grade both beat Dell Rapids, so that was really cool to start off their season. Um, they were supposed to have a game on Friday, but with Elkhorn Jefferson playing and their football state title, we're gonna bump, reschedule that game till later, make sure we can get it done, and then wrestling will get going. Also, you start noticing with Bound, our winter sports are gonna start putting their practices in there, so it's kind of a one-spot shop for anybody. Um, we need to see when people are practicing, or, or if, whether it's Darcy or anybody in the office to know when people have practices, we can put all's in Bound along with their competition schedule. Um, boys basketball won't be traveling to Pine Ridge, um, we secured U S D as a neutral location, so it'll be a cool experience for our players and fans to put on and play there. Um, also, I'm gonna send out a survey here soon, once football officially gets wrapped up about our game day experiences, to the community and to our away fans, too. Just to see if there's anything we can enrich through football, volleyball, anything that people can do, that we can make a little bit better. And then I'll send a survey to all our officials that we have, about how was our hospitality, um, having them here, anything they would like to add and see, or how did our coaches treat them, how did our athletes treat them as officials, too? Because we want people to see Lennox in a great spotlight with that. Then to finish it off, just, uh, thank you to our game day staff, there's a lot of people that put on, on the game, that's more than just me. So like Nathan and Mike Astrasser do our scoreboard for football, Orville with all our announcing, Greg with spotting, and Angie does our sound and our board in there. And then with volleyball, Angie and Greg and Cheryl, uh, Mike and Clint come and do line judging, that's a big thing, and then AJ and Jordan doing all the grounds. Those football lines don't get painted themselves, even though we have the robot, we still have to be out there and get those done. And then, um, Eric does a lot of setup and takedown with our junior high events, and then a lot of the cleanup duty after, um, spending that hour or so after with me cleaning up the, the gym, once everybody clears out. You know, it's a Bills game, I, I put it up on the board for him, so.
Yeah, it's kind of, after, after we get finished with football on Saturday, our fall is done, and we'll rock and roll with the winter, so sorry that was kind of long, there's just a lot to cover.
Will the visitors be able to go around now, okay, for the winter?
Yeah, and we're gonna have to flip, the way our student section is, just talking with Becky and all, and just seeing how volleyball was, we're probably gonna, we're gonna have to flip around, um, our benches. So now, um, it'll be on the Daktronic scoreboard side will be our home bench now, and so we'll put the student body on the other side. Just kind of creates a lot of hard funnel through there, too, but then it also protects our home bench, putting it in that far corner, if we're gonna have visitors wrapping all the way around and having a whole bunch of people walk behind them. So that's just something after, just seeing everybody on admin duty of what to kind of do, because when you walk into the gym, it's really cool, but then you have a student body that's kind of blocking your whole view. So if we put them on the other side, that'll kind of open stuff up. We'll have to find out how to get the live stream to be in a little different spot, or raise them up a little bit, I was gonna talk with Paul Currie about that, about if we can just raise those guys up a little bit, so. But yeah, we'll be able, that hallways basically gonna be open now, that they can loop around and come in that way.
That'd be a nice change. I, I like the students that, that they are, to maneuver around and get in there. A lot of people sit right where their students are because the students don't show up, and then they start flooding in, and adults get pushed to the side. But it's a good, good, good fault on everything, thank you. Any other, please, if they miss anyone? Alright, then let's move on to financial reports.
I just have additional bills on pages forty-seven through seventy-four.
Alright, once we've had some time to review those bills, I'll undertake a motion to approve the consent agenda for this evening. Motion to report?
Second.
Alright, we have a first and a second, to approve the consent agenda, just a reminder, that includes the correction, uh, corrections of the previous meeting minutes, um, financial reports, and approve all claims, um, within that consent agenda. Any questions or discussion? I'm gonna go. Otherwise, let's vote.
Heidi?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Alright, action item B then for this evening, is any conflicts of interest to be, to be disclosed? There are none, we will move on to action item C, which is to approve the district's commercial insurance package. I'll undertake a motion to approve, um, the district's commercial insurance package with the seventy-five thousand pro bill deductible. Undertake a motion to approve that. We have a first?
Second.
And a second? Any questions or discussion on that insurance package for the year? Alright.
Um, may I add also that you're approving the, um, the payment to the M C. Because it wasn't included in the, well, actually it wasn't for the report, but just so you know that we're, you're approving that to include that.
Okay, so we're approving the district's commercial insurance package for the seventy-five thousand.
Along with the invoice to the M C.
As long, as well as the invoice to the M C.
Yep.
Okay, that's it, we'll go. Any questions or discussion on that? Let's vote.
Renee?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Alright, action item D is to approve the new contract with Grant Budnas as assistant basket, boys basketball coach, undertake a motion to approve that new contract.
Second.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second, any questions on that? Hearing none, let's vote.
Melissa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Alright, action item E is to approve new substitutes for workers' compensation, um, that's on page seventy-six of your board, it's Lisa Dasher, Alexis Drew, Chris, Christopher Farnsworth, Lisa, what's that, Copence? Copence, Kristy Langman, Michelle Pepper, and Cade Gerard, and is there any more to add?
Jason Alton.
And Jason Alton. We're gonna add all those to the workers', uh, substitutes for workers' compensation, undertake a motion to approve that. We have a first?
We have the first.
You have a first? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, let's vote.
Scott?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Alright, action item F is to approve the contract with Stockwell Engineering for the high school parking lot resurfacing next year. Undertake a motion to approve that project with the Stockwell Engineering, um, bid, estimated bid of seventeen, uh, seven hundred and eighteen thousand. Undertake a motion to approve that. We have a first?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or discussion on the parking lot resurfacing?
So just we'll come out of, check a lot way?
Yes.
We're gonna do it to bid, so we're gonna all, we're gonna do a bid on one, and then an alternate bid on the other, and see how it comes back before we proceed with it.
Okay, so then we have to do it like all in one year?
No.
No, okay, so this would be?
We could split this over two years, that, we could. We could split this over two years. That, we, we're just looking, we're gonna take it out to bid and see what we, what it comes back, but we wanted to get it out to bid now to see if we can get favorable bids on it.
They're usually pretty close on that estimation and uh make it up. Okay. Any additional questions? Alright, let's vote.
Jen?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Alright, um action item G is to approve the surplus property bid for the Chevy um twenty-five hundred Silverado. We had two bids on that. We're taking the highest bid?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, alright. That's from Paul Jacobson.
Yep.
Okay. So I undertake a motion to approve that bid um for the surplus property.
So moved.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, let's vote.
Jordan?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Alright, action item H is to approve lunch for the staff on the November twentieth for American Education. I undertake a motion to approve this lunch.
So moved.
We have a first?
Second.
And a second? Any questions or discussion on it? It's a good thing. Okay. Alright, let's vote.
Heidi?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Thank you for doing that.
Alright, yeah, no, thank you for putting together. Moving it all and working with people. Thank you very much. Alright, that ends the action items for this evening. Um we'll go into discussion item A, which is just to review classified resignations for our policy. And the only resignation is Sandy Goulterman. Any questions or discussion on that? Alright, and then discussion item B is to review the new classified employee work agreements, which is track on Tracy Abbott as a van driver. Any questions or discussion on that? Alright, hearing none, then we'll move into discussion item C, which is to review the district report card.
Alright, thanks everyone. So um when the state comes out with the report card, there's a lot of information that's out there, so putting together takes um a lot of hands. So I wanna thank Chad Allison as he was home. He helped supply a lot of the information, especially for the high school. Um if you wanna go to the next slide, Kayla, you'll see that uh we had seventy-two percent of our students proficient or advanced in ELA, sixty-six in math and sixty-one in science. We were up one percentage point from ELA previous year. Uh stayed at sixty-six percent. Uh we did go down four percent in science and I will take point for that because our fifth grade students performed at a forty-four percent last year. So there will be, there are changes that have been made for this year. We are actually going to have, we are having science every single day uh with our fifth grade. Where before, uh with the way our schedule was set up, they would get it two days a week. Not enough, especially if it's something that the state is tracking. It's not a part of our SPI for the intermediate. It's not a part of the SPI for the middle school, but it is a part of the high school's SPI and we'll get to that here in a little bit. Something that the, the um state has started to track that we haven't had this all the time is the growth that our students have made. So in order to show appropriate growth, what happens is um the state looks at all the kids in grades three through eight in grade, actually it's just grades three through eight. And they look at their previous year's test. So the only ones affected by this are fourth, our fifth, our sixth, our seventh and our eighth graders. Third grade's not included. Is they take a look to see once where their score was compared to everybody else in the state with the same score. And they track them on how they scored the next year. If they were kind of in the same group, they were considered as keeping up. If they performed lower one year, but they made more gains and they were starting to catch up, that's the designation they would get. Um students that will never, I mean not never, but likely ever be a three or a four, it's your twenty, your twen, lower twenty-five percent of your students. If they made significant gains on their test, it's called very high growth. So you get points for those. If you did not make the necessary gains as your counterparts within the state, you're not meeting standard and you get zero points for that. So that's what the whole growth is. You'll see that in our SPI scores, kind of have an idea of what that is. But sixty-eight percent of our students were either uh keeping up, catching up or had very high growth. And sixty percent of our students catching up, keeping up, very high growth. They don't do, uh we don't have ELA because we don't have a subgroup of ten or more in a particular grade level, even within our district taking the tests.
Okay, so then if we look at the district performance comparison, we are top two in a region, which is something I think we should super celebrate. Um we are tied for our ELA proficiency um with, oh no, we're just two out of fourteen on our ELA proficiency. Tied for two out of fourteen on our math proficiency at sixty-six percent. And then tied um at second out of fourteen for our science proficiency out of the districts in our region. And then compared to the state, so Mr. Icke, and he showed me how to do it today, goes through all of the uh school districts in the state. And if they beat us in one thing, he puts them on the list. Um so out of a hundred and forty-eight school districts that he looked at, we are third out of a hundred and forty-eight in our ELA proficiency. Tied for ninth out of a hundred and forty-eight on our math proficiency and fourteen out of a hundred and forty-seven on our science proficiency.
And that will be better next year.
Uh if you look at our historical district achievement for ELA, you can see the progress that's being made. Um we are sitting at seventy-two percent for our district. Math is sitting at sixty-six percent. Again, you can see the, the progress that's been made over the last ten years.
And the gap that we have there, that's the COVID years?
And then science took a little bit of a dip, but um changes are being made. We're doing our curriculum stuff uh meetings right now as well. So we're looking at some of those things that we can do to improve our curriculum, to improve test scores.
Yeah, I've always, I've always found that very interesting when you look at the whole nation as a whole. We just continue to go up. Even during the COVID time, our scores just continue to track on the right trajectory. Even while we're just complaining that education's falling behind and everything else, things just kept going on an upward, so.
I would, I would say that once they started tracking SPIs again, um that, that year they tracked them again and we were able to get scores, that was probably our best year.
Yeah, if you go back to the district performance comparison, you can see at the bottom where we were compared to the state. When you go back a couple more, yeah, back to the bottom. Only one more. So the state's ELA proficiency score was fifty-two percent. Um math was forty-four percent and science was forty-four percent. So we're performing even well above what the state proficiencies are for everyone. So that's really good to see. And then this is just the SPIs over in the last ten years. Uh yeah, you can see that they're trending upwards. It's good to see that growth. Anything else you want to add, Mr. Icke?
No, I would just say that eight years ago, maybe nine years ago, we were challenged because our scores were crap. I mean, if you really look at it, they were bad. And we were challenged to do better. And I think as a admin team and as a staff, we took on that challenge. We, we made changes to what we were doing. Uh we challenged our staff and they're the ones that stepped up and through the years, they have, we've, we've kind of gotten into a flow. Even though we have some dips going on right now, I mean, it's gonna be, it's a ebb and flow of how things go. But um I think we have an idea of what needs to be done, a lot better idea of what needs to be done than we had that eight years ago. And in fact, they called um Brandon Valley because they're gonna find out Brandon Valley is the top, one of the top schools in the state. I think Warner is the only school that outperformed them. Um they have sixteen kids in their high school that took the, the um smart balance test as high schoolers. Where Brandon Valley is, is large. And in talking to their curriculum director and uh instruction and assessment, she said that they have great parent support. Their, their community puts pressure on them because they know what the scores are. Uh in fact, she said when they moved into town, one of the things that the real estate agent asked, asked them what they did and she said what she was going to do. And he says, our scores are top in the state. Don't mess it up. Like there's that prep. They know what's going on. And they also said that the teachers, like they know their standards. There's no magic pill, no magic trick. It's knowing what your standards are, uh what you need to teach, how far you need to take it, stay in your lane, do your job. And I think that um we can learn a lot from that too. Even though we do really well, we have things that we need to work on. We need to pinpoint what those things are. Uh relate to our staff. I think we have relayed that um to our staff and it's just, um we need to continue to work. So I'm gonna go into what the SPI actually means. And I know I did this last year, Jordan wasn't around. But basically, this is the model. This is what the state says. These are the point allotments for your student achievement, your academic growth and your EL proficiency. We don't have EL, so our ten points get um divvied up into these six categories. And then your school, school quality is, is what percentage of your students are in school ninety percent of the time? Okay? So you're gonna see when we move through this, um the numbers are gonna be a little bit different. And these are eleven point two five for the elementary, the intermediate and the junior high, and these are gonna be twenty-two and a half. Okay, so come on the next slide. So what student achievement mean, like how are we getting these points? So there's a formula and I can show you that formula sometime if you wanna stop by my office. But basically what they say is if you're a level one student, you get two point two five points. Point five if you're a level two, point three if you're a one, point one, two, one point two five if you're a level four. You're gonna see that the junior highs percentage of students proficient and advanced are higher than the intermediate. But the intermediate had a higher SPI because we had more fours than they did. So that's gonna be the clarification on that. So academic growth, we talked about that. It's either, either keeping up, catching up or you have very high growth compared to everybody in the state. That me versus everybody in the state that had the same score as me last year, how did I do compared to them this year? So that's what the whole academic growth is. You get no credit if students are not meeting standard. And then our ELL, we don't have that as a subgroup. That would be worth ten points divvied up amongst the other groups. And then school quality, how many of our students are here ninety percent of the time? So we'll take a look at how each of our schools did. Lennox Elementary, you can see what their numbers are here. Uh the points that they're given, that's how they get a seventy-five. So the Lennox Elementary has an SPI of seventy-five. Worthing Elementary is gonna be a little bit different. Uh the reason they're a little bit different is because they don't have a twenty-five percent lowest quartile because they only had twenty-five kids. Well, if you take twenty-five percent, that's either six or seven, right? So, so they had a total of seventy-four. And then Lennox El, uh intermediate, so you'll see again, you're gonna find that the, the junior high had more students proficient or advanced than Lennox Elementary did. Lennox El, or than the intermediate school did, but the intermediate school's gonna have a higher SPI than the junior high just because of those fours. So you see we had an SPI of seventy-three. And then the junior high, that's their point allotment. They had an SPI of sixty-nine. So what does that mean for the high school? The high school is kind of messed up. It's, it's really kind of confusing. Like I look through this every year like four or five times. I emailed the state. It's like, just make sure I'm clarifying because there's three graduating classes that you have to look at. Uh the four-year cohort graduation, that is the class of twenty-twenty-five. The student achievement, that's the class of twenty-twenty-six, this year seniors. And then you have the college and career readiness. Oh no, no, I'm sorry. The high school completion, that's a class of twenty-twenty-four. So you're really comparing three graduating classes for the points. I don't move through this quite yet. Because if you look here, ten points for the EL, we don't have that. So you're gonna see some goofy numbers for their SPI because they give it up amongst all those. So the fifteen points for math and ELA is actually gonna be like sixteen point two five or something like that. So what does all of that mean? Student achievement will be the same. So if you wanna move through, one more. High school graduation, so this is a class of twenty-twenty-five. So they wanna know how many of the students in that cohort, cohort as freshmen graduated at the end of twenty-twenty-five. So you have to figure in who dropped out, who moved out, who moved back in. But of that core group that started as freshmen, how many of them graduated in twenty-twenty-five? Whether it was with a diploma from Lennox High School or a GED. So that's what that information is. On-time graduation means of those people, let's say they drop out, did they still, uh how many of them graduated on time? Some of them, maybe they took them another year to get their GED. So that's that information. College and career readiness, this is the goof, this is really goofy. Okay, so to earn points, you have to get one of these three for ELA and get one of these for math and have an, an endorsement on your diploma that's, that's advanced. Like did you take the classes that push the AP classes, whatever it might be? Okay? That's a full point. If you don't get one of these, you could get, if you don't get both of these and that diploma marking, you could get one of these, so this or that, and then get a silver on the NCRC, you get a half a point. So that's the whole, I mean, this is a lot of things that go into figuring out how you earn SPI points for the high school. Okay? And that's that, that advanced endorsement on, on diploma. So they look at that. Okay? So if you get uh three or four on smart and balanced, or you get that ACT, or you get that AccuPlace, or one of those three on both reading, ELA and math, and you get the endorsement, you get a point. If you get one or the other, then you get a half a point. So let's take a look and see how the high school did. So I think this is, this is the one that I was looking at. We, which is really good. Hundred percent of the students that were in that freshman cohort, they all graduated. Ninety-two or ninety-three percent of them graduated on time. So it might have taken some kids a little longer to do it, but they all graduated. For this, seventy-six percent of our students got the two for, one for math, one for reading and that extra endorsement on their diploma. Seventy-six percent of them. Eleven of that, eleven percent of them got one or the other and the endorsement, which tells us that like what, little less than twelve percent didn't get anything. So that's their point allotment. And you're gonna really notice the ninety is gonna really stand out for the high school. So what we do then, I know it's really small. So we compare ourselves to the regional elementary schools. There were twenty-seven regional elementary schools we compared ourselves to. And if you took out Brandon Valley, we would be a lot higher. I mean, Brandon Valley Elementary, I mean, all their schools really kick butt. Our elementary, uh Lennox, uh we were tied for fifth in ELA out of twenty-eight. Worthing was seventh. Sixth place for math, tied for eighth in math. If you look at that forty-six, and that's something that I talked to Cody and Amanda both about, is those are the students, forty-six percent of those students in fourth grade last year, this year's fifth grade, um met either catching up, keeping up or very high growth. So that is an area that we need to really look at. How do we get more growth out of our students? And I think, and I think these two talked about it, is the rigor. Is we need to look at the rigor that we are um teaching in math class. Those level three, level four questions, are they comparing, are they analyzing, are they synthesizing? Putting it all together, those aha moments, I get it type stuff. So that's how our elementary did, really competitive. Uh intermediate and junior highs, so these are the numbers I was talking about. Seventy-three percent were proficient or advanced in ELA, sixty-nine in intermediate. But yeah, we out, we outdid them in the SPI because of our fours. So if you look at our numbers, uh junior high was third in ELA. We were tied for sixth out of nineteen junior highs or intermediate schools. Um second and third in Um, second and third in math proficiency, second sixteenth, I hate that number, but it is what it is in science. And then our academic growth, and where our students were at, and then our SPI scores. Intermediate was fourth out of eighteen, and, uh, the junior high was tied for seventh out of eighteen. And here's a, here's a really cool one, here's the high school. Look at the ones out of fourteen, or twos, or threes. The, the one that they scored the lowest on, they were tied for eighth on on-time graduation at ninety-three percent. So, I called, I, when I was talking to Brandon, I told him, "We're better than you in the high school, so we're coming for you." And they love, they love that competition, too, like, "We, we want people to push us, and we wanna be able to push people, too." So, it's really impressive on, on where the high school is at, um, with those three graduating classes, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. So next year's gonna be a little bit different for the high school, um, the state's gonna, they have the state ACT test out now, um, that our students will be taking this year as juniors. That one test is paid for by the state, and they have to take the reading, math, reading, math, writing, uh, science, and there's another one in there, they have to take the whole damn it. If students want to take something, take it again, that's on the students to pay for. So we're really learning about, like, what our teachers need to be able to do, like, how does this work at Lennox High School? 'Cause we've never hosted an ACT event before, qualifications, what do they need to do to get themselves ready? The testing windows, um, how many days can they test? Like, there, so there's a lot of things out there that myself, Laura with accommodations, we talked a lot, we're gonna be meeting again next week, we have a lot of webinars we're listening to, live meetings that we're going to, and then Mr. Bresky, so we're kinda working together as a team to, to get everything figured out. It will be in March, um, we have test window two that we'll be participating in, and, uh, we'll see what the results are gonna be. Unfortunately, if you go back, real quick, I wanna look at the ACT number, if you look at our ACT, we're at a twenty-three, that's top in our region. That's going to come down, because now what we're doing is we're telling everybody, whether you're going to college or not, you have to take this ACT test. So, well, it'll be interesting to see how far the numbers drop, but, um, going to a meeting with an ACT person, they said, "Yeah, they're gonna drop," but everybody's will, so we'll see once, we'll see once what happens, um, when we get the results. I don't know how low do SPI numbers, I, I don't know what will be included, so that will be something that we will learn as time goes. It's a lot, sorry, Mr. Shade, I did take more time than you. Yeah?
So if the students take the ACT before the March date, does that...
They pay for that.
And, okay, does that count towards the scores?
Yes, it would count towards the super score, yes.
Okay, so then, does, the one that gets on here is the one they take ahead of time?
Yes, I think, no, well, from what I'm gathering, and don't quote me on this, but what I'm gathering is your super score will be included on that.
Okay, got it.
That would be my question. You don't have to take the science and reading if you pay for it on your own, but you do have to take the science and, and, not the science and reading, the science and writing. But you do have to take the science and writing for the state assessment, so if you're going into healthcare profession, you need to take the science. If you're gonna go into law or wanna be a teacher, you gotta take the writing. So.
I don't know, we just got the ACT, you just got the brief paper, you just took the whole thing?
Mm-hmm.
It's simple.
Yeah. ACT is gonna be modified a little bit, less questions, same amount of time, so they're gonna eliminate some of that stuff, but still give students the same time to complete it. Again, a lot of learning still needs to be done in the next few months for us.
Are we doing surveys with graduates? Like, uh, um, after they've graduated, how did you feel, like, were you prepared for college, especially like the ones that are in their first year?
I think Mr. Allison has done that, hasn't he? I think he surveys them.
Just to kinda see, like, how, are readiness numbers, are, is it correlating with those kids, and like, do you feel like you're ready for this?
Right.
Or do you feel like, uh, like you don't know what's going on?
That'd be a question I would save for when Mr. Allison comes back.
Yeah.
'Cause I don't, I don't have that answer.
Your numbers, it looked like between the years of sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, we had a huge jump.
Yeah.
Can we repeat that and figure out what happened? What did we do? Repeat it.
We paid attention to what the test was and, and, um, had intrinsic and extrinsic motivators for students, uh, set goals, so I, I don't think we did that past, I know I, I did when I was teaching, we never, we never set the goals, it was kind of, here, here's the test, let's take it, hopefully you do well, try hard. Like, now it's, we make a big deal out of it.
Sorry, if it'd be, and I have, and I see, as to where students were more prepared to what the test looked like. Before that, it would just kind of, touch fingers that we got everything.
Yeah, so, well, I want you all to remember that it's not only about a test, that we're here to help kids, too. I mean, there's another beast in this education, too.
That's why it's like, I wonder what the grads, how they feel.
I'll, I'll email Jen that, and keep those surveying, I'll, you know. This is extremely important, I'm not telling you it's not, but there's a whole lot more to education than just this.
Mm-hmm. This is like the fifty-foot looking down.
Yeah, yeah. Good, thank you.
Thanks for bringing this together.
Thank you. Yeah, this is awesome, Mary. I think there's a financial picture to go into this, too, 'cause if I'm not mistaken, of all the years that we put this, with the numbers, not only were we achieving these numbers, what we're doing at one of the most efficient schools in the state of South Dakota, on a cost-per-student basis, so you get, like, there's more to the story than this year's saying. And I would like to say, well, whether the kids think past graduating here and then it's because, well, my mind, we're on top.
Yeah. I'm also curious as to how the ACTs will go with, like, the kids doing, um, those practice questions or whatever at the beginning of the day? What's that called?
Uh, during SRB time, they do it.
Yeah, during SRB, they're doing, like, practice things that the kids probably roll their eyes at and think are dumb, but they don't know that it's preparing them for this big test to take that coming. I wonder if that's gonna make an impact, 'cause we're not doing those ACT prep courses anymore, we're having our own teachers do it, so I just wonder.
And I know there's a push to find an alternative to the ACT, because I struggle with some of our special ed kids taking an ACT, um, I wish, and, and I'm, I'm not saying that facetiously by any means, 'cause I think there are kids that are, special ed kids that can take the ACT, but there are some that just are not here to take an ACT, and I wanna work with those kids, too, that, what is a test that would benefit you, that's gonna be a, a better fit? Um, and I know that, um, the superintendent's group is kind of working on some of that, too, I don't know if they have any success on it, but trying to just find another assessment. Because we were gonna try and use, like, have them push the N C R C, well, that's not, you know, accredited by, you know, ACT, so they won't let you, but the N C R C's a great test, but now they're not paying for it anymore, either. So, that'll all come out of the SPI equation after this year.
And, and again, on top of all this, again, talking to financial numbers, the scores that we've achieved, and how quickly we forget that the world fell apart not that many years ago, right? And these kids have achieved this, the admin team and teachers have achieved this through all of that to get to where we are today, so congratulations to all you guys on the effort.
Doesn't happen by accident.
It don't, it does not, nope. And, and again, very financially, you've done it, top of that world, too. Thank you all, all right, let's move on to, unless there's any other questions or comments?
Well, and I think that's gonna segue back into my comment about, we're gonna have to, as a board and admin team, really pay attention when the legislation season starts, because if we get zero percent, which that's what they're talking about, we can't accept that, that's not okay, because that's not good for education, that's not good for our kids. And we have to do a very sufficient job of educating our parents on, this isn't right, and we have to stop this, 'cause this voucher garbage and all these other things that are coming at us, that's not acceptable, and we have to take a stand. So.
The math just doesn't equate how they, I don't know, it's gotta, I don't understand.
No, none of it makes sense.
Darren, those are all public schools on there, right? We didn't, there weren't, we don't compare to private schools.
Private schools do not take that.
No, they're exempt, I'm like, real fun.
All right, any other questions or comments? Again, thank you, guys, we've made action item H, lunch for the whole team, very easy. All right, moving on then to updates, uh, discussion item D, um, Lennox High School addition.
Here's your, here's your final, this is it, so, um, the, I know, if you've been up there and you come in the front door there, there's, the baller lights will be going in here shortly, we, they should be in here pretty quick. Um, the theater, uh, seat install is done, the sound and lighting is done, the fire and smoke system they're working on right now, there was some issues with it, it's not connecting right. Um, and then, um, AJ and his crew is working on rocking around the tent courts right now, so they're getting that installed, or they were until we got some snow in there, but that'll melt and they'll be able to go back to it. Um, so here's the, when you come in the hallway, so the top left picture, that's kind of the big commons area. So this would be coming into the auditorium, and then the top right one would be the, you're going down the hallway, and the bottom left corner is when you're going right before you go into the theater itself. So everything is carpeted up to that point. And then there's the pack from the stage. And then here's the pack from the sound booth, the sound and video booth, that's going, and play all set up, there you go. And then I went up into the catwalks and took some pictures above, way above the catwalk down. So that was a couple of days ago, before they actually started putting carpet down. And then we went through a completion walkthrough last Friday, there's still quite a bit of work to get done, but hopefully we'll get that punch listed out, and they were busy over there working today on things, so that we can get the musical done on the twenty-first or twenty-second. I've been pretty adamant that that's gonna go on those two dates, because if it doesn't, there's a cost associated with that, because we have the rights to that up until the twenty-second. If we don't get that play done, there's more cost involved to push that play back. Um, so, and I don't feel like we're paying that bill, somebody else is gonna pay that bill, so hopefully we will, uh, get that play in by the twenty-first or twenty-second, so.
Is that all they have, is punch list?
Pretty much, just punch list stuff. Their curtains are supposed to be in this week, so they'll get those, um...
They started putting one of them up today.
Did they?
After the tour.
I was over there early this morning, so, um, they still have a little bit of carpet work to do, um, and then just cleaning and get the alarm, the fire alarm system, we work, that's the main thing, so that way we can occupy it, we could, so. But they're having, they do have play practice in during the evening, so I told them that was pretty much down the road, we have to get the kids to downstage and be able to have play practice, so. Other than that, that's kind of where it's at, so we're almost done, and then we'll organize an open house and try to do some stuff with them. You know, I talked to Mr. Koby about having, maybe having choir kids sing during open, an open house, so that we can have them showcase the choir, and, so, we'll put some things together and do an open house, really cut, you know. So that's your final update.
That's it.
I'm not giving another one.
All right, well, that'll be removed from the agenda then going forward. All right, uh, moving on then to board recognition, I'm not doing a picture tonight, um, but the, uh, ASB S D award.
Yeah, so, I got it in the mail the other day, and I got in the mail, you earned a bronze plaque from the Associated School Board, so if you attend in a number of trainings and things like that throughout the year, um, you earn a plaque each year, so anytime, like, Jen and I went to the, um, flirting with Larson last week, um, if you go to, like, Jordan went to the school board convention, anytime you do anything online, they've got me to do retreat stuff, and all that adds up, and they give away clocks for that time of service, so, um, I thought that was very impressive considering the fact of what you went through last year, and how you got to get training.
Surviving last year.
Should've got a bullet fund then, but, uh...
Oh, good.
I got that in the mail the other day, so I thought that was a, a nice deal. So I'll bring it back next month, and we'll take a picture with everybody, so. But, work it out.
Thank you, just bringing that award in, too.
You heard it, not me.
Yeah, now we have Gable.
I, I actually have the real Gable.
All right, then, um, that ends the discussion lineup for this evening, then we'll move into, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session, um, for South Dakota Codeified Law one dash two five dash two one, superintendent evaluation for the beginning of the year. entertain a motion? Second, first, and second? All those favor, in favor, say no by saying aye? All right, and we'll move in.
Do you want to get right away?
I'm gonna, right? Wait, my, yep, I'll pick one off. Thank you.
You go.
This is good.
I mean, if you wanna hang out.
I love being in the student library.
It is.
You might be, you might be the superintendent after the night's over.
Thank you.
So, obviously, I'm going to have to come back. Bye. See ya.
All right, we're out of executive session, seven forty-four. So entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sure.
All right, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.